Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Aldermen Meeting. One of the things I need to tell you, if you all come for the night of reorganization of the Board, we expect you to be here every week, every meeting thereafter, so we'll look forward to your faces out there. One thing I would ask you to do, if you have cellphones, if you would turn them to vibrate or turn them off during the meeting, so it doesn't disrupt the Alderman. At this time, I want to call the Board of Aldermen Meeting to order for the City of Warrenton on April 16, 2013. Alderman Dreyer is going to lead us in the pledge, if everyone would stand in face of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the open and executive session minutes from April 2, 2013.
I would like to make a comment on the April 2, the open session meeting minutes. I believe that one area is inaccurate, as the hiring and introduction of John Leach shows a five to zero with one absent vote. I believe I voted no on that. Other than that, it seemed accurate.
You think that vote should be five to...
My recollection was...
Four to one.
Four to one.
Okay.
Is this on the regular meeting minutes, or the open, per open and executive?
No, it was in the regular meeting.
Regular meeting minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as corrected.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dreyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
I abstain, I wasn't here.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried, five, zero, with one abstention. On item 3B, regular board meetings minutes from April 2, 2013. Any questions or concerns? I'll hear a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dreyer, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve the regular board meeting minutes from April 2, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
I abstain, I wasn't here.
Motion carried, five, zero, with one abstention. On item four, hearing from the public, we extend the courtesy to the public each meeting, that if you would like to address the Board of Aldermen concerning city business or other issues, we ask you to come forward to the podium, state your name, keep your remarks civil, please, and five minutes or less. So if anyone would like to address the Board, please do so at this time. Not hearing from anyone, then we're going to move on to item five, certification of election results.
The following is the election results for the April 2, 2013 election. For Alderman Ward 1, Karen Kastner Lee, 151 votes; Ron Dergus Meyer, 112. For Alderman Ward 2, Scott Costello, 118 votes; Gary Ock, 222. For Alderman Ward 3, John F. Clark, 89 votes; Don Brown, 30. Proposition 1, shall the city limits of the city be extended so as to embrace and include all the property within the following boundary lines and found in the county of Warren? 515 yes votes and 187 no votes.
Any concerns with the election results? The motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve the certification of the election results. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. At this time, we have two Aldermen departing us before we swear the two new Aldermen in, so I'm going to ask if they would step down front, and I have a couple presentations for them. We have a plaque here for Alderman Beth Kendall, that says, "The City of Warrenton extends sincere appreciation to Beth Kendall for servicing as Alderman Ward 2 from 2007-2013. Your genuine dedication and heartfelt service to the community have truly benefited the residents of our city." Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Alderman Tallow, "The City of Warrenton extends sincere appreciation to Phil Tallow for servicing as Alderman Ward 1 from 2006 to 2013. Your genuine dedication and heartfelt service to the community have truly benefited the residents of our city." Thank you, Phil. You want a picture? Are you watching?
Beth, you want me to sign?
Yeah.
Yes. On item seven, I have oath of office for the two new Aldermen being sworn in, and that would be Karen Kastner Lee and Gary Ock.
Probably got them all sworn out.
Oh. If you insist.
I don't think I get a choice.
I forgot about that. I was going to leave him behind.
Mary, I'm going to think about that today.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I possess all of the qualifications for the position of Alderman of the City of Warrenton, as prescribed by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the State of Missouri, provisions of all laws of this State affecting this city, and the code of ordinances of the City of Warrenton, and I will faithfully demean myself in office. Congratulations. Thank you.
Changing of the guard.
Changing of the door.
And the name of the...
Yeah. We're good about that.
See if they spell.
Now it's time to go back to work. At this time, we need to reorganize the Board and ask for the election of a Board of Aldermen President. So at this time, I'll take nomination for that position.
I'd like to make a motion to elect John Cornell as the President of the Board of Aldermen.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kastner Lee, seconded by Alderman Ock, to nominate John Cornell for the position of President of the Board of Aldermen. Are there any other additions or concerns?
Call for the question.
At this time, we'll ask for roll call votes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastner Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried, six, zero. Did I get your vote, John? Okay. I wasn't sure. On item nine, we extend the Board of Aldermen the same courtesy that we extend the public, that if they would like to address any concerns with the city, we'll open the floor up for them at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have some comments that I'd like to, since it's been a while since I've been here, to kind of get an understanding of the procedure, to get items on the agenda. And since I've run, I've had several requests on sidewalks, and I'd like to get a thorough understanding what the procedure is for getting sidewalk issues to the point where they're now handled. Is it a budget process? Is it the person who goes on the Internet? And I guess there's a section on the city website where you can request services, and if somebody could get me up to speed on that, I would appreciate it.
Jerry, you want to comment on that?
Sure. We are in the process right now of working on the budget. We've just started. So if you have a listing that you'd like to get either into the capital budget request for sidewalks, if you can get us a list of those, either to me or to the Public Works Director, we can get prices associated with those and get them in the capital request listing. If you have more repair-type issues rather than capital projects, you can get those to me, and we will get those to the Public Works Department to put on a repair list. They maintain a repair list for sidewalks all the time.
Okay. I do have a request from the individual who lives at 401 Pershing, and I think by looking at the sidewalk, it looks more the nature of a repair as opposed to a capital project.
Okay.
If you could add that to the list.
Sure.
We did orientation last Wednesday, and something came to my attention, and I want to see if we can get it on the agenda for a future meeting, and that relates to the process of hiring. I understand that the Board no longer... The employment letter will be issued to the potential employee prior to the Board of Aldermen voting, and I think we need to talk about that as a procedure. This is opposite of what I'm used to doing. It's opposite of what the city did before the Board would approve the position, then the letter would be issued for the employee, and I'd like to have an opportunity to talk about that in the future. Also would like to see if we could have a discussion with the auditors on the audit to not reveal the audit information in a closed session. I think I've talked to the city attorney about that at the orientation meeting. I've had a number of people in the public who would like to be involved with that when it comes up before the Board, because it doesn't appear to cover anything under the sunshine law, unless there's something related to litigation or property in there, and I doubt there is. So I know that's going to take some time for you to get a hold of the state auditor, so I'd like to see if we could do that. And some of these are probably just agenda items, Jerry, but I didn't know what the procedure was as it comes to that.
Some of them probably would be good if we do a work session, maybe before one of the regular meetings. We could answer and solve a lot of those situations. I don't mind scheduling something like that.
Right. And while speaking of work sessions, I think Karen probably agrees with me, but I think Karen and I would like to have a discussion about the Overpass Project and the Taxing District, because to get up to speed, not to give anybody the impression we're against it, or, you know, there was a lot of discussion in the campaign about east or west, and I think we just would like to get up to speed. I know a lot of the other Board members maybe have been in public hearings. I don't even know if there's been public hearings on that that have taken place, so I'd like to see if we can get that on the agenda.
Why don't you write those things down for us?
Okay.
And for me, and then we'll see, you know, when we got a good night where we can schedule a work session, maybe we can kill most of the birds with one evening.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't think any of them is going to take a long time.
Right. That's all I have.
Mrs. Kastner Lee?
I do have a couple comments, and first, I want to thank everybody in the crowd that supported my election campaign, a lot of friends in the community that really helped me out, knowing that my time to do so based on family matters was shortened more than expected. So I appreciate the opportunity to sit up here amongst the Board and work on behalf of the citizens. One thing I would like to announce to the people that are present, and anybody who might go and check this out on YouTube later on, but we are going to have a Ward 1 Town Hall meeting, and anybody's invited on May 1, at 7:00 at the Lutheran Church. Purpose of this is really just for me to sit down with my constituents, to get a good understanding of what's important to them, so that I can bring those issues to the Board.
Let us know how that...
Well, you're in my ward, you can come.
I know. And I'm always amazed that, I guess, not amazed, but somewhat disappointed, like election time, how few people vote, and how few people are involved in the committee, and that's why I'm curious to see what kind of turnout response.
And that's really the goal of this, is to get the communication flowing between the community and the Board, so that there's a lot of open communication. We are working on their behalf and listening to them.
Okay. Good. Alderman Clark, anything to say?
I'm fine.
You're good? Alderman Cornell?
Believe it or not, no.
Oh, shocking.
You're good. Alderman Flake?
No comment.
No comment. Alderman Dreyer? Okay. That means you're going to turn it over to me, and then I get my chance to talk a little bit about things, or what we've been doing as far as that goes. First of all, I welcome the new Board members on board. Look forward to working with you. One of the things I always find when you reorganize a Board, each Board takes on their own personality, good or bad, they all develop a personality of their own. It'll be interesting to see what direction this Board goes. Hopefully, we're all moving in the right direction and move together, so looking forward to that. I want to tell you a little bit about what I've been doing the last couple of weeks. It seems like I've been on tour, traveling mostly. Michelle Slinter and I have been running all over the country, attending meetings. Our first meeting, two weeks ago, was over in Herman. We met with Governor Jay Nixon, and Governor Nixon was promoting and drumming up support for his Medicaid monies with the federal government, and asking us to support with the legislators and our senators, trying to make sure that Missouri got all the money they were entitled to get. Kind of an interesting meeting, and it was good hearing from him. A few days later, we were invited to Hannibal, Missouri, to our MoDOT district meeting with our Missouri Highway Department engineers, and we had what we call a roundtable discussion, or maybe it was more of a square table discussion, but it was all the counties in our district, and MoDOT's asking for help. They've got a money problem, their cost is going up, and their budget is going down, and they're trying to figure out what's important to Missouri citizens, how we as a county want to address the issues. And I think what I took away from that meeting was, most of the people were in support of, let's try to maintain what we got, not too interested in building more highways and new highways and that type of thing, more, let's just see if we can maintain what we have. So it'll be interesting to see what the results... They're going to meet with every county in the state, and then later this fall, they're going to post the results of what the people in Missouri want to do. So our next meeting was, we met with Senator Roy Blunt, and that was the easiest of the meetings, because Senator Blunt just kind of gave us a brief rundown of what's going on in Washington, DC. And believe it or not, it was just about the same old stuff as usual, arguing, bickering back and forth, and no one was moving too far in one direction or the other. But it was interesting to hear from him and hearing what he had to say. I have one more item on my report, and then we'll move along. I want to talk about the Greater Warren County Economic Development Group for just a minute, and I really want to thank them for the great job they've been doing. Also want to thank Michelle Slinter, because Michelle is the City of Warrenton's representative that sits on that Board, represents the city, and tells us, you know, what's going on, and keeps us up to date on there. Everybody on this Board got press release news here a week ago, and I'm going to ask Michelle to briefly give us an update on that press release.
A leading North American building materials manufacturer is located in Jonesburg. They plan to create 100 new jobs. It's going to be $100 million capital investment, and they manufacture, I'm sorry, production and distribution site for residential roofing shingles. It's going to have a 60,000-square-foot manufacturing facility and 150,000-square-foot warehouse. They project to begin on the summer for the plant, and it was founded 108 years ago nearby East St. Louis, the company, and it's called Certainty Corporation. So that was a project with the Greater Warren County and Greater Montgomery County EDCs.
A great thing for our city, for our county, and the region, $100 million economic impact on this vicinity. I think that's almost unbelievable this day and age, that they were able to recruit and lure a company that size into our area. A few weeks ago, I was at KWRE doing live wire for them one morning, and they asked me, they said, "Well, you're coming up on a year as mayor, you know, what's your best accomplishment, or what do you think your greatest accomplishment was in your first year in office?" And I really would have to say, it's the Board of Aldermen building an alliance with the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council. I think that's going to pay the city big dividends down the road. I know we had some nonbelievers early on, that they thought, you know, this is a group of good old boys, and they're probably going to take us down the wrong path, and it's been just the opposite of that. These good old boys have led us in the great direction. They also tell me they have some more good news coming for us in the future, and I'm looking forward to that. So I'm excited about them. I think they've done everything they said they were going to do. Might tell you, not to bore you, but just brief history of how this group formed, to begin with. They were sitting around a coffee table one morning, and they were talking about our area, our economic area, and I remember their words to this day. They said, "You know what, boys and girls, we're not getting it done here in Warren County. That the kind of jobs that we're bringing to town is great for high school students that need to work and make minimum wage and have a part-time job, but it's doing very little to keep our people here in the county, provide jobs for them, that we can own a home, buy a car, and stay in Warren County and not get on that interstate and take off every day east to make a living." I think Steve Etcher told me one time that 60 to 67% of our workforce gets on the highway every day and leaves the county. And these people recognized that, they had the vision that we need to do something to try to combat that. So they started putting their heads together, and they realized that, you know what, Warrenton can't do it by themselves, Wright City can't do it by themselves, Martha'sville can't do it by themselves, but if we all pool our resources, put them all in one pot, we are an economic developer that's known nationwide, maybe even internationally, we can bring some good business to our area. And basically, that's what they've done. They've done everything they said they were going to do. Back to my original statement, I think that's my biggest accomplishment, the first year in office, developing an alliance with the Greater Economic Development Council of Warren County. So thank you, Michelle. And I'll be quiet. The next item on the agenda is item 11, introduction of Jared Swantner, Recreation Coordinator, that started April 8. Dottie Phillips, you want to address that?
Yes, thank you. This is Jared Swantner. Jared did start on April 8, and has really made a huge impact already. He kind of started off in the busiest season that we have, and has stepped right in and taken things and ran with them. Jared has a degree from Southeast Missouri State University in Sport Management and Business Administration. His experience includes working for the Nashville Outlaws, which is a summer college baseball league there. He did things, lots of different things, but included organization, scheduling, and field prep and maintenance. He also worked for Southeast Missouri State Recreation Services and for the City of O'Fallon. So I think that with the addition of Jared, we're in a very good place, and we'll be able to continue to move the Recreation Department in a positive direction.
Good. Welcome aboard, Jared. Welcome. Glad to have you. Dottie, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
I thought you had some summer employees. Maybe not.
I do, was it a different place on the agenda? Do you want me to go ahead and do it?
No, we'll wait a minute.
Okay.
I remember seeing that, I thought maybe you were going to do it all at once, so... All right, I'm on item 12, hiring and introduction of James Davis as a full-time ground and maintenance worker at $12 an hour, start date April 17. That's yours, Brad?
I thought you all...
I didn't hear...
I think you all have to go on.
Oh, we need a motion to hire first? I'll entertain that.
Make a motion to approve the hiring of James Davis, full-time ground and maintenance worker, at the rate of $12 an hour, with a start date of April 17.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the hiring of James Davis, that is a full-time ground and maintenance worker, at the hourly rate of $12 an hour, with a start date of April 17. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastner Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried, six, zero. Now you can introduce it.
Mayor and Board, I'd like to introduce James Davis.
Welcome aboard, James.
James. Glad to have you.
Anything else, Brad, that take care of your...
I have more later on.
Okay. Item 13, approval for a catered liquor-by-the-drink license for R. Corner Bar on May 4, at El Hemador Restaurant, located at 512 Warren County Center. That's for Cinco de Mayo. Any questions or concerns about what we're doing there?
Sounds like a good time.
It will be a good time, for sure.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license for R. Corner Bar and Grill.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Ock, to approval of a catered liquor-by-the-drink license for R. Corner Bar and Grill on May 4, at El Hemador Restaurant, located at 512 Warren County Center. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastner Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
And Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, six, zero. Item 14, enhanced enterprise zone, and we need some help on that one. Mr. Etcher, you're going to bring us up to speed, because I'm sure we've got some questions.
Thank you, Mayor. You probably have a lot of questions as we go through the enhanced enterprise zone, and I'll try to give you the Reader's Digest version of what's going on, but if there's questions, just interrupt me as I get going. You talked about the success of Economic Development Corporation and bringing the business to town. One of the tools that is really beneficial in attracting businesses of that magnitude to our region is an enhanced enterprise zone designation. Enhanced enterprise zone is a geographic area that meets certain qualifiers. The qualifiers are unemployment, household income, and poverty. And if you reach a certain threshold, you become eligible to apply for that designation. We have a window of opportunity where a portion of Warren County can qualify for an enhanced enterprise zone. Being designated a zone allows businesses that relocate or locate into that region opportunities to apply for a state income tax credit, based on the number of jobs, the amount of investments that they're incurring. There's $24 million, but the tax credit is actually allocated each year by the State of Missouri for this program. There's currently over 120 enhanced enterprise zones in the State of Missouri, all representing very unique geographies. And the geographies are kind of complex, because they have to go upon the 2,000 census boundaries. Even though we had the 2010 census done, there was no income data associated with the 2010 census, so they're still using the 2,000. So the first step in creating an enhanced enterprise zone is to develop what they call a qualifying run, which is to look at the data to see what geography is eligible. And we have an area of Warren County that is eligible. We're, the county, since they are the principal governing agency that controls the majority of the land, is actually taking the lead on preparing the enhanced enterprise zone designation. Elected to just focus on those corridors or those eligible areas along the I-70 corridor. There's another part in the very southwest portion of the county that does meet the eligibility criteria, but that's very rural, very ag, almost remote type of a setting, that doesn't align with the county's long-range plan. And they don't necessarily want to encourage major development down that corridor. So they're looking at an area of geography that runs along... Where the county, since they are the principal governing agency that controls the majority of the land, is actually taking the lead on preparing the Enhanced Enterprise Zone designation. Elected to just focus on those corridors or those eligible areas along the I-70 corridor. There's another part in the very southwest portion of the county that does meet the eligibility criteria, but that's very rural, very ag, almost remote type of a settings that doesn't align with the county's long-range plan. And they don't necessarily want to encourage major development down that corridor. So, they're looking at an area of geography that runs along I-70 from Montgomery County line through the city of Warrenton, Truesdale, and ends at the eastern limits of Wright City. The way an Enhanced Enterprise Zone works is the local communities have to get together and develop this designation, request that designation from the state of Missouri. Once the state of Missouri qualifies that, then there's an ordinance that is developed, and a procedure that's developed as part of the designation that enables a company to apply for those tax credits. The interesting thing about the Enhanced Enterprise Zone is it's not just a state program. In order for an Enhanced Enterprise Zone to be effective, the state requires that the communities actually have a local incentive policy as well. And they have the threshold set that at a minimum, the local community has to offer a 50% tax abatement on the improvements to the real property related to that particular project in order to even qualify. And now, not every business can qualify for the Enhanced Enterprise Zone. There's a specific list that'll need to be developed of the types of businesses that we want to encourage and support within our region. I mean, things like gaming institutions, sit-down restaurants, retail establishments, those things the state do not allow in Enhanced Enterprise Zone. But you can focus on a lot of the other mixed codes. To begin the designation process, now that we know we have an area that actually qualifies, the county has to appoint, the lead applicant, which in this case is the county, has to appoint an Enhanced Enterprise Zone Board. And this board is responsible for reviewing and making recommendations to the units of local government on what that policy should be, in terms of what businesses do we want to attract, what are the wage scales that we want to maybe incorporate into there, and then what level and what types of local incentives do we want to include. The EEZ Board is seven members required by statute, one which has to represent the school districts that are impacted by the designated area, one that represents the universe of taxing authorities within that identified geography, and then five members are appointed by the lead applicant. And the county has actually extended an invitation to the city of Warrenton, the city of Truesdale, the city of Wright City, to appoint a member to that, those five open spots. They've also extended an invitation to the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council to designate a representative, and they've selected a private business located within that area to also serve on that seven-member EEZ Board. Thus far, we have five of the members confirmed to participate in that. We need, if possible, a representative from the city of Warrenton, and it's designated by title. With the city or county government, it cannot be an elected official, because this board is actually advising you as what the policy and procedures need to be to take advantage of Enhanced Enterprise Zone. So, this board will get together, they'll discuss the various options available for the EEZ, and they will then put forward a recommendation on what needs to be done to take advantage of the EEZ. Each local unit of government has to adopt by ordinance that policy in order for it to be in effect. And the policy, the designation goes for 25 years, so it's a tool that, once you have it in your tool bag, you can use it for a long time. The thing that typically scares people is, "Well, we don't want to give up a tax abatement." Well, what we're seeing is a lot of our communities are using tax abatements, whether they're going backdoor through a Chapter 100 or a Chapter 353, it's there. A lot of communities say, "We don't want to lose tax revenue." With the EEZ, you don't. Your base is currently maintained. Whatever that tax base is for that property, it is maintained, plus you get 100% of all new personal property taxes that's associated with that property, and you will get a minimum or maximum 50% of the new taxes on those improvements to the real property. Plus, as those abatements expire, which most of the abatements will be structured on a tier basis, as those begin to expire, you're going to be receiving substantial tax revenues from that. Plus, you've got the indirect benefits of job creation and turnover to your community in terms of the revenue dollars. So, there's a lot of benefit to having that tool in the toolbox. So, the advisory board, EEZ Board, puts this out, the cities and counties have to adopt that resolution. Once that's adopted, it is submitted to the state. Once the state confirms it, then businesses can apply, if they meet their qualifications, to get the tax credits from the Enhanced Enterprise Zone Tax Credit Program. And I apologize, that was a very brief Reader's Digest version of a very complex subject matter, but I'd be happy to talk with you in great detail about it.
Lots to digest.
Let's talk tax abatement. How can we talk about tax abatement by the county, not by the city?
If you're talking about tax abatement on real property, yes, by the county.
By the county, so.
But it would abate all taxes, it would affect all taxing authorities, yes.
Okay. What does a typical abatement look like in terms of length, in terms of?
The state requires a minimum of 50% for a period not less than 10 years. Beyond that, the sky's the limit. And a lot of them have a tier to where, depending on the length and the amount of investment, that it's a graduated scale. That is, the business gets established, the abatement amount decreases each year. In other words, you may get 100% abatement the first year, 80 the next, and do it that way. It flexes, and that's the idea of this council, is to come up with a policy that's uniform amongst the region. So, everybody is working basically from the same playing field, same set of rules.
Okay.
So, the benefit to the city, where do we benefit for doing this? Just the fact that we compete on a level playing field to pull more businesses in?
I would think that's a principal benefit. It's not a level playing field out there now. And I'm not a huge tax abatement proponent, but at the same time, you can't fight a high-tech battle with primitive tools. You know, you've got to kind of arm yourself with what's necessary. So, I think if done in moderation and done appropriately, there's some value to that. Most of the major companies that are looking for locations, major projects, the first question they ask is, "Is this an Enhanced Enterprise Zone?" For instance, the CertainTeed Project, they qualify for up to $5 million in Enhanced Enterprise Zone tax credits because the site, part of this site is in Montgomery County, which has the EEZ. So, you can see how lucrative or how attractive that is to companies looking to come to the state.
If, a couple things. Number one, what is, you said there is a window of which we call it. Tell me what that window is.
The window is closing. As soon as the state releases their 2010 census data, which they're saying will be the end of April, 1st of May at the latest, the 2010 census data is no longer valid. So, not knowing what that 2010 census data is going to look like, I can't guarantee this geography will be eligible once that data is released. Now, the state has told, I mean, there's a elongated process to getting this done, but the state said, "If you get your board appointed, you get your public hearing set before that 2010 data is released, we will consider you work in progress. We will allow that to go on." And the reason the window is so small is because it's a combination of the poverty and the unemployment statistics, and because those numbers have been variable, we finally hit it. You have to be at 60%, and we're at 60.29% with our geography, so we just barely eked above the line.
When did we hit that?
I would say based on the last quarter Bureau of Labor statistics. There was opportunities to qualify previously under the 2008 Presidential Declaration, but there was not a direct tie to the disaster declaration and the proposed eligible area.
I don't know who to ask here, or the city panel, but what does a tax abatement look like? Have you looked at what an abatement means to the city, the city budget? I mean, if you're giving funds back for an abatement, but you're getting an economic benefit out of it, then you could look at it no different than hiring an economic development person or putting money into advertising or any type of thing. Do we have a projection as to what that abatement may look like?
That is, maybe we just need to make sure we understand the terms. The abatement gives nothing back. If you have a piece of property out here that's generating a thousand dollars a year in property tax, it will always generate that thousand dollars. We're not rolling anything back. All that is abated is the improvements on that property. So, if somebody came in and put a million dollars worth of improvements on that, then there would be an abatement on that million dollar.
Okay, so it's just what they're bringing into the community gets abated?
Yeah.
So, if you were to purchase an existing building, for example, whatever the taxes are in that building will stay the same, any improvements will be delayed for a certain period of time.
That is correct. That's correct.
But it may, by deferring any, with new development, I understand we're not taking anything away, but we are preventing the growth of the tax base to provide the services that are going to be required for this industry, or for the school district to provide for any, the children of any workers that relocate to this area. And you said that we're going to, we will, there'll be a gain on the backside with any new personal property tax involved. If a company applies for and receives the benefit of these tax abatements through the EEZ, can they still apply for and receive these Chapter 100 and Chapter 353 tax abatements?
It's a great question. Typically, it's one or the other. Very seldom will you pile up the EEZ and the Chapter 100 or the Chapter 353. I will find out. I don't have that specific answer.
Okay, say that again in a way that a common person can understand.
Some communities are offering Chapter 100 or Chapter 353 tax abatements, which is where, it's basically a financing tool that allows a private company to make a development publicly financed and avoid taxation on that part that's publicly financed.
Publicly financed by the local taxing entity?
Yes, yes. The city would issue bonds, a city of Wright City, city of Truesdale both use these, where the city will issue bonds for a project, Company A. While the city is paying those bonds, that is considered public ownership, and they're leasing that facility back to the company, so it's not subject to the tax. So, in that situation, it's all off the tax rolls. The beauty about the EEZ is it doesn't take it off the tax rolls, it just takes the real estate improved portion only. You still get that portion of property to help pay for some of your support services. So, the question is, is can they do a Chapter 100 or a Chapter 353 financing mechanism and still qualify for the EEZ? My guess is they could, because you've met the requirement of you've got at least 50% tax abatement at the local level. Because if the city's issued the 100 and 353, you've got that local incentive, so they qualify, so long as they were a qualifying business under your definition of the EEZ that needs to be yet developed.
This is only for new businesses entering the community?
Or expanding.
Or expanding. So, a business could be here, and they could be in the industrial park, and they want to make a significant expansion, and they can qualify under the district.
Yeah, one of the comments and questions I have, Steve, on that note is, per the website for the state of Missouri, it says that the company cannot have been announced or construction started prior to the approval process. So, in the case of, you know, a business that is refurbishing or building, that's just the construction process. But if we were to decide to do it today, anybody like CertainTeed that's already been agreed to, they can't benefit from this agreement.
It's, well, CertainTeed actually could probably take advantage of this if we put it in place soon enough.
But how could they if they've already been?
Because they've already filed the notice of intent to take advantage of the EEZ credit. But right now.
From Montgomery County.
From Montgomery County. Right now, with no EEZ in Warren County, the company would be motivated to make the vast majority of their construction activities on the Montgomery County side, so they can take advantage of that tax credit. If we can level the playing field, they can build it to where it can be on either side of the county lane, and they still take advantage of that. They just have to get that notice of intent and approval prior to their construction activities on-site. So, it's a little complicated with CertainTeed, and this is not necessarily a result of CertainTeed, but it's germane to CertainTeed, because it can benefit them if we can actually put it in place and establish it.
Okay. I've got another issue, too, and I understand that this is probably something that is not as big of an issue that it probably is, but I even have an article here from Columbia, who they dissolved their zone. When we have to claim this area is blighted, I don't think that the community of Warrenton is going to appreciate that. I don't think the citizens are going to appreciate their property. John, you are in the neighborhood, that's going to be blighted.
Sure.
I don't personally think that that necessarily bodes well for the community. I understand that, you know, technically, maybe it doesn't mean a thing, but to me, that bothers me on property values, and I don't appreciate being called blighted.
Absolutely. And we've had a conversation with other communities as well, and you've got to look at what is the definition of the word blight in this particular situation. And we're dealing with under Enhanced Enterprise Zone, an economic blight. It's not like it's a housing blight, because a lot of times you throw the term blight out, it gets joined with slum and blight. I mean, I think that's what we're all hearing, that it's this depressed area. No, it's not. What the blight means is it's a piece of property that's not utilized to its maximum potential, maximum use. So, there may be some infrastructure impairments that's keeping it from being developed, there could be workforce issues that's keeping you from realizing your full economic potential. So, there are several chapters within the state statute that define what blights are for various programs, but this one is strictly an economic blight that we're looking at.
Is that going to let the county or the state come in and say, "This area is blighted, we're going to take your property to build something?"
No, it's not an eminent domain blight at all. No, it's different than the blight definition even for a TIF.
Who declares what's blighted and what isn't?
The first thing, you would, as part of this application process, we'd have to develop a blighting ordinance and a blighting study related to this geography, so the entire geography would qualify as that blighted economic area, if that makes sense. I think you all got time to do that.
It's always driven economic based on family income, is that what?
It's poverty, unemployment, utilization of resource, yeah.
But there's a lot of different things that could cause, and I have it here someplace that's listed as to how you could blight.
Right.
A piece of property. I mean, it could come down to your sidewalks. I read sidewalks in here at some point, you know, as far as being blighted.
Right.
So, we're not just talking, I mean, blighted is truly, it's an argument that says your community is not a good community. When you say your community's blighted, I'm sorry, if I'm going to be looking for a place to move because I got a job at the GM plant, and I see that this community's blighted, it means a lot of things to me. So, how do we educate? If you're saying it's not an issue, how do we educate all the population and anybody who wants to move here? Because, believe it or not, even though we want to grow entities in this community, there's a lot of us that commute 100 miles a day, pay a lot of taxes to live in this town, buy our cars, do our sales taxes, buy all our clothes, and whatever comes to this town. You still get benefit from those people who want to live in a rural community and yet work elsewhere. So, if I see a place that's blighted, it's not on my high list of places to move to.
Can we have our economic development person talk to the issue?
Absolutely. Yeah, I lived at the workshop the other day, so, yeah.
It just, it depends on, from what I understand, you know, the board will be put together, and then they have to look at the census tracts, and the census tracts will tell us where we can go, and it has to have, like Steve said, the income and everything. However, I understand where Karen's coming from, blighted could cause an issue, and it makes me wonder about the retail as well. If we look at bringing in retailers, and the retailers know that we're blighted, could that have some backlash on us? I actually even asked Steve, because I looked up on the website to see where their other EEZs are. I know that there's one in Montgomery County, there's one in Lincoln County, and I was concerned, because there was none in St. Charles County, so I asked Steve, you know, "Why is there none of these EEZs in St. Charles Counties?" And he stated, "Due to the income level, St. Charles County does not have any of them." So, I agree with Karen, if this is something we do, we definitely have to educate not only the public in Warrenton, but outside of Warrenton about the blighted.
So, they generally, what you're saying is generally you'll find blighted places or zones in more rural settings, potentially, or you don't see them, do you see them in St. Louis?
Sure. Yes. I think that's what scares people.
But Lincoln County has them, but they don't even have a property zoning board, correct? So, is that correct still about Lincoln County?
Right.
So, I mean, they have an EEZ, but who cares? They don't have any zoning anyway. So, I mean, to me, I don't want to be compared to Troy, I'd rather be compared to Columbia, who says this isn't a good deal.
And why isn't it a good deal, again?
Well, because I don't want someone calling it a blighted community.
But was that the reason they turned it down, is just because of that connotation?
They actually passed it.
They passed it.
And then they rescinded it because of public backlash off the blight is.
Off the blight issue.
Now, and correct me if I'm wrong, after May 1, or whenever we have to go into the new census, we're not going to qualify for this.
I can't, I don't know how you'll qualify, because the new census data is not out. My guess is you won't, because looking at the median household income by the American Community Survey since 2000, 2010, there's been substantial growth. I don't think we're going to qualify under the poverty and income level, personally.
What happens on the application to apply for this enhanced, if one city or committee decides, "No, we don't want to participate"?
It's dead.
It's dead.
It's dead, no go.
And?
And the thing I disagree with Karen about the blighted committee, I don't think anybody's going to advertise our committee as blighted. The only thing that we're talking about blighted is new commercial construction.
You're, this whole zone's blighted, Jared. That whole zone's blighted.
It's blighted, it has nothing to do with residence, or where you live, or what kind of house you live in. It's strictly commercial, factories, manufacturing, or improvements to existing manufacturing.
Well, that's who can benefit. The blight, the term blight, if you want to look up in your state statutes when you have nothing else to do at night, need to go to sleep, Chapter 135, Section 950, Subparagraph 2, gives you the definition of what a blight is. And if Michelle's supposed to do the PowerPoint from the state director.
I do not particularly read it. It says, "An area which by reason, the predominance of defective or inadequate street layout, unsanitary, or unsafe conditions, to deterioration of the site improvements, improper subdivision, or obsolete plating, or the existence of conditions which endanger life or property by fire or other causes, or any combination of such factors, recharges the provision of the housing accommodations or constitute an economic or social liability, or a menace to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare in its present condition and use." That is in the PowerPoint that I gave you.
Is that a definition of blighting or definition of, it sounds like a definition you don't want to associate with the community.
Right. It's a definition of blight, but you can pick one of those elements. An element you would want to blight this under would be the, let me find the exact here. Oh, let's see. Inadequate street layout or sanitary sewers or unsafe conditions. We don't want to say it's unsafe, but we can say, we don't have enough infrastructure to support economic growth. We don't have enough street networks to support economic growth. So the blight study, the blight ordinance will specify in there specifically how we determine there to be a blight. And we would not list these 13 items that are just a curse. We would define specifically things that are related to this particular geography.
I'm sorry.
You know, Steve, I do have at least some concerns and I'm playing the devil's advocate. I don't know where I stand on this necessarily because it's very new to us. And quite honestly, to be looking at a first of May deadline is difficult to-
Sure.
-digest all of this. So I've got a little bit of problem with the blight stigma. And the more I thought about this, the, when you're talking about abating property tax and personal property tax, the city of Warrenton's operations, for the most part, are sales tax driven. The abatement of property taxes and personal property taxes, I don't believe are necessarily going to affect the overall operation of the city. But I do have a concern over this I-70 corridor. If we are incentivizing this area for manufacturing, for some of that heavy industry, all of a sudden, I can see this I-70 corridor being swallowed up by industry that isn't going to grow our sales tax base and therefore limit our future revenues. Whereas I've always been of the school of thought that I-70 visibility, manufacturing doesn't need, they need accessibility, they don't need visibility. Commercial retail development needs visibility. And my fear would be, what if this high visibility area on I-70, which is a great asset to the city of Warrenton for future retail development, is gobbled up by manufacturing that isn't then going to provide a tax base for us to operate, but it is going to provide a draw on the services that we have to provide? That's a concern of mine that I'd like you to address. And also, I want to know if you've had preliminary talks and where does the school district stand on tax abating?
To your first point, I would not see, development of I-70 corridor, I believe is still going to be market driven for the most part. The industries that would come into this enhanced enterprise zone will not typically grab your highway frontage exposure. They don't need that. They're going to need access to the rail, they're going to need convenient access to the interstate. You know, and the thing that drew Certain Teed to that location is the rail. It's not the interstate.
But it still took interstate frontage.
But it did take interstate frontage. But as you, I don't see the whole corridor developing that way. But to your claim that that's not going to generate operational revenues for the city because of sales tax, I would disagree. I think every job that you create in your community creates opportunities for increased sales tax to your community. More shoppers, more residents, more people working here, buying here, living here. So I think there's that upside that's potential.
But where are they going to shop? Where is the added retail going to go if it's, if manufacturing is along the I-70 corridor? Where's the retail growth going to go for those people to shop at, or are they going to go to Wiltsville?
Well, but isn't some of this also driven by zoning?
Absolutely.
So if we create a commercial zone along I-70, that prohibits manufacturing from coming in. Plus, I would assume what's exposed to I-70 is probably your more expensive properties. And if I'm developing a manufacturing facility, I don't necessarily-
Right.
-need to pay prime price to be sitting on there.
It's expensive if you're coming in retail-wise, but if you're coming in and you can get part of the property tax abated, all of a sudden that asking price has come down a little bit. It's more affordable when I'm not, when I'm getting the incentive. And again, I'm not saying that this is a bad deal, but I am trying to balance all of this, all of these consequences through my head and trying to get these questions answered in a short amount of time.
Right. And it's, we don't have to get all the questions answered now. And I'll explain what I mean by that in just a second. But I think Gary's right. Your land use planning and the market will determine a lot of your I-70 developments. So if you want to preserve the I-70 corridor through the city of Warrenton as completely residential or complete retail and you don't want any industrial there, zone it that way. They can't supersede that. That's not what this does. This just says, if you're a company qualifying in this criteria, you can tack into this benefit.
Steve?
Can I get back to the second question before I forget it? The schools.
Yes.
They were invited, we invited all the taxing authorities to the workshop that the State Director of Enhanced Enterprise Zones put on. And Montgomery County R2 is there, Wright City R2 is there. Both are very supportive of that. Those, Montgomery County R2 is already in an EEZ, so they're realizing the benefit of it. The, Warren County R3 has confirmed a person who's sit, to sit on the seven-member advisory board. So they want to be involved in the development of this procedure and development of this policy. So they're trying to get themselves informed and educated. And really, that's what we're looking for, the city of Warrenton. I'm not looking for your blanket endorsement of this process. What we need at this point is if we're going to move forward, and if we're going to move forward, we've got to get that board established. And the county extended an invitation for the city to appoint somebody to that board. So as soon as that board can be established, then we can get the public hearings set. We can go through the process of defining what a blight is, defining what the benefits would be, defining what the cost would be, and then getting down the road. You, as the city of Warrenton, at some point, will have to make a decision when those ordinances are placed before you that says, here's what the EEZ board is advising. You at that point can say, go or no go. It requires that level of adoption.
So the critical thing tonight is the appointment.
It is.
I mean, because I'm sitting here dealing with, I hate to be saying that, my first city council meeting in six years and first thing I do is vote for something to blight the community.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, if 20 years from now, there's a lot of manufacturing and people are working in the community and have jobs, they're not going to care if they came in under a blighted scenario. They're going to care that they have money to bring to their families. So it's kind of a, something that takes a lot of thought process to.
Well, let me ask you this, but you're worried about the term blight. Is your industrial park blighted? Is it a blight?
I don't know.
It is.
Well, I would say it's not.
But it is blighted.
Well, and here's the problem though, Steve. You would agree that there can be a stigmatism-
Absolutely.
-and a backlash to the blight.
Absolutely.
And here we are talking about it and asking us to take a step, no matter how minor, even if it's just appointing somebody, before we've had an opportunity to talk to anybody in the community about it. And that puts us in a, that puts us in a bind, more so than any of the details, is the timeframe.
Yeah, but what I think, what you're saying-
The timeframe's actually a lot longer than May 1 starts because we've got to do the ordinance and all that.
Absolutely.
Right. I understand we're not, we're not blighting an area tonight.
We can actually move forward, if we wanted to, we could move forward on this and not be captured by it. We get any point up to the ordinance, we can say no.
I understand.
Right.
I guess my question is, I'm sitting here hearing about this for the first time tonight and asking, and everybody is, and being asked to take any steps. And that's difficult. I wouldn't approve the approval of a engineer at the last meeting because they gave it to me the night of. And I like to be able to sit down and devour and study these. It just puts me in a very difficult position to not have, when I ran for office, I told people that I was going to try and make educated decisions and this doesn't allow me to educate myself.
I'm going to raise my hand because you've got me on a long time. This is the most lively board we've had since I've been joining these things in December. A couple of things. And going along with John, I want you to know, this is not a personal thing. When we ran for government office here, one of the big things that we ran on was that we needed a working relationship with the county. Okay? So with that being said, I think that's the difficult part here because I think we feel like this has just been thrown at us and we don't want to be the bad guy as no county because we do want to work with the county and feel like we've been put kind of under the gun to discuss it. And I have a hard time believing that this was not an idea or an issue that came up before the second Thursday after the election that we got noticed for meeting. But with that being said, a couple of questions. Can you do this zone without the city of Warrenton borders? Because if I'm looking at this map, I can't find a single place in this map that's related to the city boundaries that I think a manufacturing plant should go.
Right.
So can you do this without the city of Warrenton? And why is that?
Because the boundary is not based on the city of Warrenton, it's based upon the 2,000 census tracts. And you can, you have to take tracts in their entirety and they must be contiguous. And the city of Warrenton's tracts extend beyond the city limits. And we're dealing with the 2,000 tracts, not the 2010 Luca tracts that are current. So it's-
It's impossible.
It's impossible. But honestly, the fact that your area is designated, the city of Warrenton is EEZ and there's no place for manufacturing, that's fine.
But we're still blighted. That's what I was trying to get around, is that blighted thing. The other question I'm going to try to get in here before someone else gets over.
All right. You're going to be doing this for a long time.
I know. It's okay. That's why we're sitting next to each other. So we have this board. And if I read correctly, and you could correct me wrong, I think it says something like a five-year on the board or what?
Yes. There's staggered terms on the boards.
So it's five years. It's five years on the board. It's a non-elected city official. I understand now why you're saying that is the case. However, what happens if we've appointed Michelle to be our representative on the board and Michelle says, you know what, I'm moving to California? Who appoints her replacement?
You appoint the positions by title, not by name. So you could say, we want the economic developer, or we want the, you know, the groundskeeper or whatever. You appoint it by title, not by person. But to get back to your first question, I'll get to you in just a second, Gary. This meeting actually did come up this quick. In fact, we are, the county was first made aware of this, don't know whom I did, I don't have my account for him, like April 4th or 5th. And said, hey, you've got a window of opportunity, if you want to do an EEZ, you've got to do it. And they're like, we have no idea what you're talking about. They called us. I called the State Director and said, what do we have to do? And she goes, let's get this workshop set up, get all the taxing authorities there. I'll explain what an EEZ is. We did that on April 9th, is it 9th, wasn't it?
I think so.
And we gave a public entity like two or three days notice because that's how quickly she wanted to get this moving because she knew she had a window. So I met with the county then that fall, that was a Monday or Tuesday, I met with the county on that Thursday and said, here's the steps you have to take to get there. First thing is get this board. And they're like, well, let's get all of our cities on board. And that's, that was their direction.
Why do you think they picked up the phone and made that call? Because there's probably plenty of other places in the state that they could pick up that phone. So why did they call Steve Etcher?
They didn't call Steve Etcher. The conversation started because of the Certain Teed project. Because they've been committed to $5 million worth of tax credits. There's 186 acres that they're requiring as part of this project, a portion of which is in Montgomery and a portion which is in Warren County. Now, they can locate the entire facility on that tract of landing in Montgomery County and all the improvements will be in there and subject to the abatement under the EEZ, leaving the Warren County side blank. And they're like, is that really what you guys want? And I'm like, well, we can't qualify. And she goes, well, let me run some numbers. We'll see if we can get you qualified. So that's the genesis of the conversation.
Is that Certain Teed's plan? Have they stated that?
They have three or four different site plans that they're currently working on right now. They're doing topographical studies on the site, so I don't know what their final determination's going to be. If they split it, the improvements between the two sites, they would probably only realize 50 to 60% of that tax credit during the life of the project. If they put part of the project in East County.
Can I make a suggestion to the mayor? I think this is really a critical concept because we certainly want to encourage economic growth in the community and I certainly understand the concerns that John has about a quick decision. I didn't file, I'm sure Karen did, and a lot of the board members didn't file it coming to two meetings a month. I wouldn't be opposed if the mayor would call a special meeting of the board for a week from now or some period of time so that we would have an opportunity to do some research, talk to a few people, to kind of get a feel for what we're voting on. I would be more than happy to give up an evening because I think this is important for economic growth. Because any incentive you can throw out to bring businesses, I don't think you should walk away from them lightly. So if the mayor would be willing to have an extra meeting, I certainly would be more than willing to attend.
And I agree with that too. But I have a question. Is there a reason why the county can't offer their own abatements to Certain Teed without this zone?
Because they can't get the state credits.
They can't get the state tax credit. Right. It's all about the state income tax credit.
The zone doesn't exist to give the credits.
Exactly.
But there's no abatement that the county can give.
The county could give their own abatement on property tax, but they can't get the benefit of the state income tax credit.
And the abatement's probably the smaller piece compared to the tax credit piece, which is really, I mean, that's really the big thing they're after is the tax credit piece. The abatement helps, but it's certainly not a deal breaker.
Right. And the abatement on this property will probably likely occur like they have in some of the other communities, that the city will offer a Chapter 100 or Chapter 353, so it's fully abated at that point anyway. So they're just going to be foregoing that state income tax credit.
And the city of Jonesburg has moved or is moving to incorporate the entire property.
That is correct. Once the property is settled, yes.
Steve, you mentioned all the school districts were invited to that meeting with the Missouri Economic Development Group. Was all the other taxable entities invited also? The fire department, the ambulance district, the library?
Yes. The library did not respond. They were not at the meeting. The fire was there, the ambulance was there. Because the way we drew the boundaries, there's no community college or junior college, no hospital tax and the fire went. So all but R3 School District and the library taxing authority would have been in attendance. And I talked with R3, both the superintendent and the president of the Board of Education today.
Would you be available for a work session next week sometime? You got any openings that, I think it's important that you're there to answer some of our questions.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I'll sure make myself available. Tuesday's a little fuzzy.
You're available Thursday and Friday.
Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. Thursday and Friday.
Mrs. Tharn, what have we got open next week?
We don't have anything on our calendar in the evenings for next week.
Okay. Pick a day.
Oh, Sarah, we got your phone?
Hey, I knew my schedule.
No, I do, but it all changes.
25th or 26th?
Does this have any effect on our TDD we're working on?
Um, how?
Would it do, would it mess that up or can we still do that?
No, it wouldn't mess it up at all.
How does blighted work with that?
Actually, my thinking how this affects the city of Warrenton, let's say the Allen Center, and I'm speaking off the cuff, don't quote me, I have no leads on this. It's just me speaking off the cuff.
Steve said there's going to be old people.
No. No, let's say that retail is determined not to really be gaining momentum at the Allen Center now. But you've got this large hospital that wants to build in your community. A hospital will qualify for enhanced enterprise loan credits. Healthcare services will qualify for enterprise loan tax credits. So, is there a potential benefit? Yeah, I think you could define your benefit package to do things that you want to accomplish within your community, and not work.
You can have both enterprise zone and the TDD.
Yeah, TDD is sales tax based. So it's collecting a different stream. So even if you had a project and you abate part of the real property, you're still collecting any sales taxes that would be generated related to it, you would be collecting any personal property related to that. So it would have no negative impact that I can envision on a TDD.
What's people's schedule look like next Thursday?
Works for me.
Pardon me?
Works for me.
Brett?
I'm free any day, I don't work.
We're talking about evening meeting, right?
Yeah, probably six o'clock.
I'm good at the 24th, which is a Wednesday, or 25th, which is a Thursday.
Thursday, Friday next week, I got commitments.
Let's go with Thursday. We've got five of the six here, and that's probably the best we're going to do. Six o'clock. We're not going to be, let's see, planning zoning?
No, it's the first Thursday in the month.
Okay, we're good.
Is there any information that I can help funnel your direction between now and the 24th?
Bet you I send you an email.
What's that?
I bet you I send you an email.
That's fine.
If I get questions. What are the chances that you could at least request to see if somebody from the state?
I'll ask her, she'll come back down, sure. Yeah, Gray Jackson is the administrator, I've been talking to her every day on this, so I'll see. If nothing else, maybe she can join us by a conference call or something like that to answer questions.
And from staff, I would obviously think the economic development person definitely needs to be here.
Michelle and Terry were at the meeting a couple weeks ago. So they probably know as much about EZ as I do at this point.
Yeah, because part of the discussion has been playing off manufacturing against real estate, or against sales tax. And the reality is, if you don't grow your population and you have more shops, you're not generating more revenue, they just have different places to shop. So, the whole idea of playing one off against the other really has to be thought about, and what you're really trying to accomplish, because if you don't have the jobs, then sales tax doesn't mean anything anyways.
But we also have to make sure that for those people that are going to work at this plant out west, who are chances are going to live in Warrenton, we have enough income and revenue to support the schools.
Well, absolutely, enough infrastructure to provide services.
We've got a lot of issues there with our schools, and they need the revenue, not the free students.
And Stephen, I guess we could go on, ask questions all night, but one last one from me. If we, at the point that we designate this boardage form, that stops the clock, that gets us in under this?
Once the boardage form, we can set the public hearing date. Once that date is set, that gives us work in progress.
Okay. So there is a process for public hearing through this?
Oh, yeah. In fact, we want to make this process very transparent. I mean, all the meetings where the EZ board will meet will be open meetings, they'll be public meetings, but we would want each of those representatives to report back to their entity, here's what we're thinking, here's what we're contemplating, give us your feedback, so we craft this ordinance to reflect your desires, not just, here's the template the state gave us, let's make it work. We want this to be very.
If we move forward on tonight, make sure I understand it correctly, if we move forward on it tonight, and not, and we still don't like to have meetings, so we can get more educated on it.
Absolutely.
But if we approve on it tonight, then we go into it, it's such a board, at any time up to the time we try to pass an ordinance, it can be stopped.
Right, it's not binding until that ordinance is passed and the application's approved by the state.
What's the timeframe when there is that take?
Typically, it's about a six-month process. You know, we're trying to move this fairly quick, I would guess it's going to be a three or four-month process at the minimum. By the time you have a good dialogue on what your policy's going to be, what your blight definitions are going to be, what your eligibility, your qualifying businesses are going to be, by the time you go back and report to all these public entities and get them a chance to digest it, kick it back to us, three to four months would be fast.
Steve?
So we have three or four months to think about it, actually, if we went ahead and forward.
I still want to think that, I want the meeting on the 25th before I would go forward with this, if any further.
I mean, it sounds like we have two no votes on the proposition, just by the conversation.
Well, that's not true.
Well, no, no votes in terms of making a decision to sign tonight. You know, not no toward the project, but no toward assigning, which then to me, in the case, we really need to have the meeting next week.
I wanted to ask one more question before I forget to ask you. So there's a $24 million fund that the city said, that the state sits aside for these abatements. Is that renewed every year? Do they like up that amount, or how much is left in the 24 mil this year fiscal? Do you know those information?
I can find that out. The program is only, I think, seven years old. It's actually been, has been a growing pot, so it gets a little bit more allocations each year. Each year, the legislature deals with both tax credit reform and an economic development omnibus package. Somehow through that process, it always gets a little bit more funding each and every year. So, but it is appropriated by the Missouri General Assembly.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions? We're going to move on.
It's about blighted, it's a tough one.
Yeah, I'm sorry to take up much time of your time.
We'll see you Thursday evening, six o'clock here in the chamber.
A week from Thursday.
Yeah, a week from this Thursday.
Thank you, Steve.
Item 16, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations.
You forgot 15.
I forgot who? Oh, we got the red one.
Kathy's ready to go.
Yeah. Renew service contract with Agapi Ministry, Kathy Purcell. Tried to skip you.
Sat through all of that.
You weren't on my original one, that's what the deal is.
It's been stealthed, and now that Steve's warmed you up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am here tonight to ask for the city to renew their service contract with Agapi. We have had that service contract since 1996, we're asking for the same amount of this, for the same value as last year and the year before, $14,000. I sent out a packet, but I'll just go over the statistics in the packet. We served, in the past year, we served, or for fiscal year 2012, we served 713 people from the city of Warrenton, residents in the city of Warrenton, excuse me, they were from 273 families. We spent $196,867 that year on city residents, that includes the value of in-kind gifts, that's not just cash spent. We distributed 68,550 pounds of food to residents in the city of Warrenton, which was comprised 3,750 baskets of food. So that's the 713, or the 273 families coming monthly for food. And then we added 112 families that year, or 258 people. The recession has been long and deep, and these numbers are high, and they've been high since 2009. It's been about a 30% increase every year since 2009. So, that's what we do with the money you give us.
Are there any other cities that are, does county participate in this?
They do not. They do not. Warrenton is the, we serve 1,400 people a month, and half of them come from the city of Warrenton.
With that being said, do you go to the county?
I did go to the county.
And their acceptance of supporting?
They said they would take it under advisement.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to ask. I'd make a motion to approve the, good question, renewal of the service contract for Agapi Ministry in the amount of $14,000?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dreyer, to renew the service contract with Agapi Ministries for the fiscal year 2013 in the amount of $14,000. Roll call, please.
Alder Kirsten Catherley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
I'm staying, my wife is on the board.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes, you all do good work.
Thank you.
Motion, Terry, 5-0 with one institution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Now, I'm going to Terry Thorne, Director of Operations.
Okay. My first item for you this evening is the item that was tabled from last meeting in regard to health insurance benefits for our three permanent part-time employees. I believe in your packet you had a memo that was prepared for last meeting and brought forward. By the end of December 2014, it will be a requirement that we offer health insurance benefits to our three permanent part-time employees who average over 30 hours a week. There had been some mention at last budget meetings that we were interested in providing some additional benefits to these permanent part-time employees, and this is one way that we can have the ability to give them some additional benefit if you choose to move forward. There are three options. You can either choose to go ahead during the month of May, which is our open enrollment period for this year, and add those employees. You can choose to wait until May of 2014, which will be the next open enrollment period for our health insurance program. And there is a possibility, although not a guarantee, depending on what happens, as we bid our health insurance next year, if we remain with GHP, they have said they have the intention to offer a special enrollment period in December of 2014 because of this requirement being out there. So, the choice in when you want to offer this is really the question that's before you for this evening.
Let me ask you a question on this. Every company is going through this right now. I know in our organization, we're looking at changing hours, potentially to move people below the 30 hours as an option. Has that been discussed by the supervisor or you, to rearrange salaries, or rearrange scheduling so that we avoid this problem?
It has not. The three employees who would be involved in this situation are employees that there have been previous discussion with boards on their value, and actually the discussion of adding more hours as opposed to fewer hours. And as I said, the previous discussions have centered around trying to find a way to offer more benefit to these employees as opposed to not doing so.
So when you say value, you're talking about the value of the positions. We're not talking about specific people, we're talking about.
The value of the position. Well, and honestly, with a couple of these employees, they bring, they bring practice, they bring experience to offer more than what the position requires. More experience, things like welding, things that we would have to pay to have outsourced if they did not have the skills that they bring to those positions. While it wasn't a requirement of the position, particular employees brought skill levels to those positions that have allowed us not to have to pay outside sources to accomplish some of those tasks.
Terry, one of the discussions we asked last meeting, I think, we were going to poll the three people that this would affect.
And Brandy did speak with all three of those, as you requested. Two of them indicated that they absolutely would be interested in coverage. A third said they would need to think about that, really weren't sure, had coverage from a different avenue. So, was going to compare prices of their alternative coverage and make a decision, and we've not heard back from them.
So, a minimum of two, for sure?
Minimum of two.
Maybe three.
Possibly three, yes.
It's a pleasure not to have to sit with my hands under my pants and pinch myself to be quiet for a change. So, I will ask this question, have we addressed a possibility of an option not to take the benefit, but to give a monetary payment instead? Some people have the option to take somebody else's healthcare, and it may be cheaper for us if we give them, you know, instead of paying for the health insurance, give them a certain amount of money on the paycheck back to offset the benefit. Still a benefit, they get the benefit of the extra money, but they have the health insurance somewhere else.
We have that program, in fact.
So, we do have that program. The way that our employees take advantage of that is to be able to show that they do have health insurance coverage elsewhere, and then if so, they can sign up for a program where they're entitled to half of the single benefit each year paid at the end.
So these three individuals would know that as well?
These, two of these do not have any other option for health coverage.
Well, this, I, I look at this every day, so I should know this, but isn't that option being impacted by the Affordable Healthcare Act also? It's going to come into effect basically in 2014? I thought, because we've been looking at this at work, and I seem to recall that, you know, the option, what you do with the option is impacted by what you have to do on the federal side. So I think we need to look at that in terms of offering.
Our city attorney, actually, and I just talked about this today, because we had been told that it would affect that, but I believe his research has now shown that that is not going to impact the program that we have in place.
I think it's unclear, and I think, you know, Alderman Ock, I think that's probably what, you know, we're seeing is, we've gotten information, preliminary information from some of the health insurance companies, based on the implementation of this program, was that it was not going to be a possibility. Now there seems to be a question out there, is it still going to be a possibility, is it not? And I think as we get these, as these exchanges are set up by the government with some of the insurance firms that are working with it to do it, I think we'll have more direct answers to the questions, because I think it is unclear. I think right now, what we discuss, and it's ironic that this came up and was discussed in a question you brought up, because it was an update that we talked about today, where are we with this, is kind of a wait-and-see approach, to see where it leaves our program and where we go once some of these health insurance exchanges are set up, and we can get some really concrete information of what, or if it's going to impact it. Because like I said, the insurance companies initially said it will impact it, but now there seems to be a softening of that position, whether or not you are going to have the option to purchase, or whether you have to take it.
You know, my inclination on this is that I would prefer, if we could put it off till the 2014, to see what the final outcome is in terms of how this relates to the Affordability Act. I mean, these people have gone without the benefit for quite a while, and I realize it's not a huge number for the city, and it's a larger number for them. My gut is to put it off, and let's see what happens with it, because we may have to change a lot of things, because you're right, it's a gray, there's so many gray areas in this, it's ridiculous. So, that's just where I'm kind of leaning right now.
I understand.
I don't know where the rest of the board is.
And I'm not sure where they're leading. I think what we fail to realize, these three people are key people in our day-to-day operation, and they bring a lot to the table. The one gentleman that works out around the cemetery, you can't believe how many grape plots he sells. That's not part of his job description, so grape plots, but he does it, because he's on duty, he has pride, he's working, so forth. And we really haven't given those people anything. We classify them as what?
Permanent part-time.
Permanent part-time people, and they work, what, 30 hours, 30 hours a week, year round? So, we've kind of been looking for a way to, if we raise the salary, we're raising their starting, or salary above the full-time salary, which I don't think the rest of those people would take that very well, that why would a part-time make more than a full-time? So this is a way we were looking at to maybe give them some sort of an incentive, rather than just a raise, give them a, give them some health insurance, so.
But they have been getting raises like any other employee.
They've been getting, yeah, same percentage. Obviously, they're the bottom of the totem pole, though.
You know, this is a, in my opinion, this is one of the most difficult balancing acts, when you talk about the public sector worker, of making sure you're treating your employees the correct way, compensating them correctly, yet still being responsible with the taxpayer dollar. And I probably sometimes ask questions that draw me a, as a critic of some of the city employees, and I certainly don't feel that way. I'm very much one that believes that we should have accountability and efficiency in our city government, but at the same time, I believe that there is a responsibility to do the right thing by our employees. I don't think it would be out of line to move forward with offering this in advance of what appears to be a looming deadline anyways. My question would be, if we offered it now, if we went forward with this, offered it to these part-time employees, would the option be there to rescind that if it turns out that there is a change in the mandate before that implementation? Could a future city board decide, you know what, we are paying above what we're obligated to, and rescind that healthcare? Or once we give it, are we kind of on the hook for insuring that position in the future?
Legally?
No.
Depending on the mandate.
But absolutely, it's very difficult to pull benefits away from employees, that's just.
I agree, and I would never be in favor of pulling benefits from an employee, but I would be in favor of possibly pulling it from a position.
But it's no different to the person that's holding the position, John.
No, I'm saying, if the employee left, that his replacement may not get that benefit.
But you would have to do it to a class of employees.
Right, okay.
So let's say that.
If they all quit at work.
Something happened, well, something happens and the requirement to offer it to employees of 30 hours a week or less goes away.
Right.
By some miracle. You would not be able to single out an employee, you would have to say, "Okay, we are no longer going to offer it to anyone working less than 40 hours a week," which is exactly how it stands now. So, you couldn't single out an employee and not offer it, you would have to change that entire class based on hours worked of employees.
And I think that the conversation comes down to, is it responsible to do this a year ahead of when we're going to be required to do it? Because I don't think that you look at this with the presumption that it's going to change. If that's the law, I think, like any other law, we look at it as if that's the law and that's going to remain the law.
But I'm also hearing it's not so much about the law. And so, I'm wondering in my mind, why this was tabled on the last meeting and opened here? Was it just to ask the opinion of the three employees?
Yes.
Is that why it was tabled?
No, it was also for you and Gary.
To make the decision.
Yeah, I'm a voice in.
We knew you wanted to speak.
Yeah, you know, and I come from that insurance background, as you probably know. I think we open ourselves up to work comp claims when we don't have health insurance for these employees as well. So, a work comp claim could be a lot more costly, not that we'd have anybody on our staff that would do that, but it's been known to happen. So I'm going to throw that one out to you, because it gets a lot more costly when you have a work comp claim.
But if employees enter the job where they got insurance, they don't have insurance, it's still a work comp claim, because they're enjoying the job.
One of your things, somebody gets offered injured off the job, but comes to work on Monday.
Sometimes it's hard to prove, Gary.
How do you, I mean, we spend our lifetime legislating around people who either can't stop at stop intersections, so we put up stop signs, we put up, we do all these things to try to control behavior, that's just another example of it.
I'm not saying it'll happen, but what I am saying is, when someone is hurting financially and they have no option, and they need to find some way to survive, it does happen. And I wouldn't want three good employees to feel like they're in a pinch to try to do something like that, or feel like they can't perform their job and have an income. So, I don't know, you guys who've been on the board, what do you think, and is it worth making a motion one way or the other?
Alderman Flake, I haven't heard anything out of you and Alderman Dreyer. Got an opinion?
John has an opinion, so.
I have to agree with Gary. I'm a little bit hesitant to do something like that. We just hired somebody full-time that wasn't one of the three, and I was a little curious why one of those three didn't apply for the full-time, so they were, if they were wanting health insurance, that was an opportunity at that time. But they elected not to, because it fit their schedule better, or whatever, what they'd like to do.
Their skill set?
Well, it was maintenance, is pretty much what they're doing now, with part-time capacity.
Nevertheless, they're satisfied with working part-time. They've got something else to do.
Well, they're satisfied with not having insurance.
And with the, with the, with the healthcare changing next year, it's still, people I've talked to in the healthcare industry really don't know what's going on yet, because it kind of, it's a moving target for them. So, I'm, you know, we talk about having to do it next year, by this time next year, it may not be a have-to.
Well, let's get this moving. So, I'll make a motion that the city not extend the offer for healthcare till 2014.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark, to not extend the health insurance benefits for part-time employees. And you said until 2014?
Yeah, until, well, that's the next enrollment time in 2014. And by then, we'll have clarity under the...
Well, the next enrollment might be here quicker than that, might be here in...
No, well, that's the one I'm offering.
May 2014.
14?
Yeah, she gave us three options. That's one of the options.
May 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell? Alderperson Kastlerly?
No.
Motion carried four to two.
I would like to have the board at some point look at how much revenue they have to generate to offset the cost of this health insurance. We may find that our revenue stream does not need to be as great as we think to offset this exposure, so I would like to look at that down the road. Terry, I can help you with that.
Item 16B, Board Committee to Approve Park Liquor License.
Yes, at the last meeting, there was discussion, meeting before last, there was discussion about the park liquor license, and a request to find out if a committee of the board, rather than the full board, could have the ability to approve that. So, if there was a short notice, it would have to wait two weeks for a board meeting. I did check with our city attorney, and he said that yes, you all could vote to give that authority to the City Grounds and Cemetery Committee of the Board, if that's what you choose to do. So, it is a possibility.
And I don't know if Gary or Karen are even up on that conversation that we, that we had.
No, we'd like to know why we need liquor at the cemetery, but...
No, it's part of the committee.
Part of the committee, not of the section.
Good job.
A few weeks ago, there was an ordinance passed that allowed for the board to approve a special liquor license, that could be a liquor use permit, let's call it, so that individuals who are having a special event could bring liquor into the parks for that special event through this permitting process. The board approved that, and it is in place, but the question came up during that, what if someone on short notice decided to have one of those kind of events? Could it be approved by a committee made up of board members, as opposed to waiting for the next board meeting to gain approval? And so, that was the question. And the answer is, yes, you all have the authority to delegate that decision to a committee of the board, and the recommendation was the City Grounds, since it affects the park grounds of the city. You certainly could choose to delegate it to that committee. So, it did not have to wait for a full board meeting.
So, is the procedure for a liquor license, the police does a certain check?
Yes.
So, that's still, I mean, I was, when I was on the board before, in the 20 years I sat here, we never once turned down a liquor license. It's very difficult to turn those down, so I would have no problem moving it to a committee to expedite, because the reality is, like I said, it's really hard to turn those down. I see the attorney kind of nodding at that concept, so I have no problem if it goes to a committee. I don't know what it takes.
So, who's the committee? Who?
You know the committee better than having the section.
What did we suggest the...
City Grounds, because it is the park grounds that the permit is involved with.
Okay, so, I mean, we need more than one? I mean, we need a committee of three, or...
It would be the committee, I think, next meeting, you're planning on putting your committee appointments together, so it would be that committee once it's established.
All right.
So, I believe what we need is an ordinance on the next meeting, is that correct, giving that authority for approval to that committee?
Everybody in agreement on that?
Couldn't be done by a phone tag, by just contacting the Board of Aldermen, or the members of the board for an answer?
I believe that's what we talked about, that we're doing a meeting, and soon we'll have iPads, so we can do that type of meeting, if need be.
Keep it public.
Yeah, we can do a phone conference and have it accessible by the public in here on speakerphone, so there's a lot of options to be able to get that done if we need to on short notice.
Is this a procedural thing? It doesn't really require any change in city written policy?
Well, we want to pass an ordinance that specifically states you guys are giving the committee the opportunity to approve it. But the other thing I can say is that, if your concern for it is, maybe the committee doesn't want it on their shoulders, we can write the ordinance that says the committee can refer to the Board of Aldermen for a full vote.
Right.
You know, so you have kind of that escape hatch, if it becomes something where the committee's not comfortable saying yes or no on it. Because my recommendation would be, most of the time, they're going to be smaller events, and, you know, are we going to, is it, the event going to necessitate the entire board to vote on approving a park license for them to have liquor out there, you know, or bring liquor out there? Idea being, you know, most of them barbecue, family reunions kind of things, do we need to have it for those? But if we write the ordinance that delegates it, but yet gives the ability for the committee to refer it back to the Board of Aldermen, I think you kind of get the best of it.
I view it as no different than what we do now with the Personnel Committee. Some personnel issues are handled by the committee in the interim of full board meetings, and I believe if it's not unanimous, there's not unanimous decision amongst that Personnel Committee, then it goes to the full board.
So, Counselor, you're going to take care of the preparing an ordinance for the next committee? Any other questions or concerns? We'll move on.
Farm print bid.
This time of year, we do the bidding out of all the printed forms that the city uses. We just did that, received two full bids, and then a partial, which was only a very small part from computer supplies and services of the actual bid package. My recommendation is to go with the low bidder, which is BFM Group out of Lake St. Louis. Even with the $85 charge for utility bills, and a 385 die charge, one-time die charge, they still come up significantly lower than the other bidder.
Would that die charge be carried over if we renewed our contract next year?
Yes, it's a one-time setup fee.
Make a motion that we accept the recommendation to approve the bid.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, who was that, Alden Flake?
Yeah.
Seconded by Alden Flake to approve the low bid from BMF Group in the amount of $2,611. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
And the next review, just under operational updates, we are very close to being ready to roll out the iPads. Spoke with Greg this afternoon, and the plan is to start slow. A couple of you who would be willing to volunteer to be the initial, let's call it guinea pigs, to make sure that everything is dropping down into the drop box the way it needs to, that the forms are really able to be opened, all of those kind of initial setup things, to get those rolled out. I think somewhere around May 10 will be the date that we'll actually be ready to do that. And it looked like, Greg, we had some hands up there.
Oh, if nobody else, I'll be more than happy.
I can do it anytime, too.
Me, too.
So, it's exciting. We're moving forward.
So, is the chief going to notify?
We will get in touch.
When it starts, who you want.
Ready to go. That's all I have this evening.
Okay. I've got item 17, Jack Camp, Planning and Zoning Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First half of Thursday is a specially bid permit application for a proposed Festival of Fun to be held at the Warren County Fairgrounds on June the 1st and 2nd. It's a celebration the Chambers was wanting to put on to celebrate their 90th year anniversary.
So, the motion has to be to basically issue the permit? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, sir. This is, this is the first special event permit application that we've processed. The ordinance was just put in place, and it's just to approve the permit. Yes, sir.
I think the people who keep the minutes for the PMZ zoning do a great job. I don't know who does it, but it's very, very helpful to read through the questions and the responses. I thought it was very good.
It would be Melody.
Okay, thank you, Melody. So, I would make a motion that we issue the special event permit for the Festival of Fun. Jacky?
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the special events permit request for a Festival of Fun to be held at the Warren County Fairgrounds on the 1st and 2nd of June 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Looks like a fun event.
Who would vote against fun?
I'm not against fun.
Or a festival of fun.
I'm on item 17B.
The next item I have is also a specially bid permit application request for a proposed motorcycle rally to be held at the Warren County Fairgrounds on the 6th, 7th, and 8th of September. It's going to be...
Who's sponsoring that, Jack?
Best Rally LLC, and I believe that stands for Bike Police for Education and Safety Training.
The gentleman who sat for this meeting.
And Chris Petros is here, if you have any questions for him.
Well, let me, when I made the motion, I was hoping there would be a discussion afterward, so I'll not make a motion anyway. Police Chief, the questions that came up in zoning were related to security. You have any issues?
No.
Okay.
This gentleman's been waiting for our questions all night.
Yeah, I'm the chairman of Best Rally, so if anybody has any questions.
Okay.
Is this something new this year?
No, actually, we did it last year. It was a one-day event then. It was pretty uneventful. I think it was, it went really well. We just want to open it up to a three-day event.
It was pretty uneventful, so you're coming back, right? It was so uneventful, you're coming back for more, right?
Well, we really didn't have any issues.
It means you didn't have fun, didn't you?
You didn't have fun, then. It wasn't like the Festival of Fun.
Chris, and you and I, this is not the same.
No.
All right. The only thing that I...
Well, John, what does that mean?
Well, we had another proposed bike rally that was headed for Warren last year, that I think even Chris, by the end, had some concerns about. But the only thing that kind of raised an eyebrow at me, and does any time that, I believe I saw it in the minutes, any time that I see members of the event or sponsors talk about, "We police ourselves," that's just not a term that I'm real comfortable with, because that's all, that's saying, yeah, there's issues, but we take care of them ourselves, as opposed to law enforcement, but...
You're not going to see any issues, other than what we have at the fair out there. You know, if somebody gets out of control, we'll say, hey, you either got to go, and if they don't want to, we call law enforcement to have them removed. It is private property. You follow our rules, or you leave. It's pretty simple.
Okay.
And if I may, Alderman Cornell, we're committed to doing walk-throughs to the event as well.
Okay. On any of these events, are there noise issues? I mean, because, I mean, Alderman Flake, you live around the area. Is that stuff that becomes an issue for neighbors?
Coming up next, though.
I'll have to, I'll have to say, I was at the PMZ meeting, when a fellow from the organization that's sponsoring this thing, that's running it, was here, gave an explanation of what all was going to go on out there, and he guaranteed there was going to be no racing or nothing like that. It was strictly just a gathering, and that's about it. So, he really made a good presentation, and I think he covered all the points, and sounded real good. It goes that way.
I think the next thing up, in their request for exemption of time.
Yes, sir.
The noise permit request for bands, but not for the actual event, and that will be separate after you approve this permit.
I'd make a motion to approve the special event program for, permit for motorcycle rally to be held at Warren County Fairgrounds on September 6th, 7th, and 8th of 2013.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Kastlerly, to approve the special event permit request for a motorcycle rally to be held at the Warren County Fairgrounds on 6th, 7th, and 8th of September 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Thanks for staying on.
I'll come by, yeah.
The next is, they do have a special permission for excess noise for the motorcycle rally on September 6th, 7th, and 8th.
And the noise permit for the band, is that what it is?
It's for the bands in the evening, correct, Chris?
Make a motion to approve the request for exemption for time constraint for September 6th, 7th, and 8th at the Warren County Fairgrounds.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Kastlerly, to approve the special permission for excessive noise for motorcycle rally by Best Rally LLC on September 6th, 7th, and 8th. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Thank you very much.
I'm on item 17C, Jack.
This is also a specially bid permit application for a proposed Warren High School band mud bog to be held at the Warren County Fairgrounds on May the 11th. And the extra note on this one is, this application was submitted within the minimum 90-day requirement for a specially bid permit, and the Planning and Zoning Commission requested that it be noted that due to the timing of the event and updating of the city code, that this, if you approve this, it would be a one-time deal, and there would not be precedent set for other groups wishing to apply for a specially bid permit. All future applications must meet the requirement of Section 405.185, which is 90 days, and this one will actually be 68 days since they applied for the permit to the event.
Any questions or concerns?
I have a question over security. I think these have been known to be pretty good party events for our high school kids, and I'd like to know how we're going to be patrolling and doing security.
We, actually, they did one of these last year, and I don't think there were any issues, but again, we're committed to doing walk-throughs out there.
Okay.
Generally, we can use the officers that are on duty to patrol the grounds on somewhat of a rotating schedule. I don't really anticipate any problems with that.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation of the PMZ for issuing a special permit for the mud bog. Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve the special event permit request for a mud bog to be held at the Warren County Fairgrounds on May 11th, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Now, we have the noise permit.
They had a request for a noise permit, but I don't know if, I think the applicant has to be present to request that, am I right? Chris?
Our practice has always been that the applicant be present to request it. The process is a brand-new process, but under the 60, the 90-day timeframe, and I'm not sure, do we inform them?
I send her a letter.
Saying that she was required to be present here?
That it was recommended that her, our representative, be here.
Well, could you ask her to come back on the next meeting of the City Council? Because this event isn't until May 11th, and we'll certainly have a City Council meeting before then.
I can let her know that... I can let her know that the event was approved, but she needs to...
Yeah, because I mean, for requiring other people to do it, I don't think we should make an exception.
Very quiet trucks in the market.
So, no action taken on this? We're gonna ask her to come back?
I will inform her that she needs to appear before the board at the next board meeting to request the noise permit.
Thank you, Jack.
Very good. Anything else, Jack?
I would just like to ask, since these were the first three specially bid permit applications that we processed, is there anything that you guys would recommend to include in future ones to help you make your decision?
I think it works pretty good.
All right, thank you.
I don't see any issue with it.
Is there anything from your end that has caused problems?
No, I think they were fun to process, and I'm looking forward to a lot more activities out at the fairgrounds or even up at our complex.
And how does the P&amp;Z board seem to feel about the new process?
I think it went real smooth, and Mr. Flake was at the meeting. The one gentleman from the motorcycle rally was extremely informative, and each of the applicants during the public hearing session really gave good details to help P&amp;Z make their decision, and that's why I included the minutes of the P&amp;Z meeting in your package to make sure you understood exactly what was discussed at that first meeting and the public hearing.
Thank you.
We think the P&amp;Z board does a good job of kind of filtering these things through for us, too. We always look to see what their comments were and any concerns they might have, and that goes a long ways with the board, I think.
We did ask them a lot of questions and have a lot of concerns and got a lot of answers, so they were right on top of them.
That's good. Good. We done with Jack?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Dottie Phillips, Recreation Director.
Good evening. I am seeking approval to hire the list of seasonal employees that I believe you have in front of you.
I tried to get this done earlier, and you wouldn't let me. I put it in on the other end of the program. Any concerns or questions? Need a motion to approve the hire list of seasonal employees?
Some moved. Second?
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the hire list of seasonal employees. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Anything else, Dottie?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Item nineteen, Michelle Slinter, Economic Development Director.
I would like to request approval to apply for the bulletproof vest grant. We've applied for this in the past, and we would like to apply for it again to receive three vests for the police department.
Did you get it?
Yes, we have. We, every year that we've applied for this, we've been successful in getting this one.
Great.
So, we got four vests last time, and we'd like to apply for three additional vests this year.
Some of the, we'd be instructed to apply for the grant, the bulletproof vest.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Casterly to approve the application for a bulletproof vest grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carried six-zero. Anything else, Michelle?
Actually, one more thing. I'd like to inform you all that there is a ribbon-cutting Saturday at Warriors for the Lord at nine-ten Old Steinhegen Road at nine AM. I know it's a Saturday. If you guys can't make it, I understand, but it's Warriors for the Lord. It's a resale shop, nine-ten Old Steinhegen in, just by Pizza Hut and all that little strip mall over there.
What time?
Nine AM on Saturday, this Saturday.
Okay. Chief, I'm turning it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The first thing I have this evening is our monthly report from March. Just a couple of interesting notes from the Criminal Investigations Division report. The first item that's mentioned there is two burglaries that were solved. That was actually immensely a team effort on the part of Sergeant Eller's crew as well as the Criminal Investigations Division, and actually, one of our code enforcement officers, after talking about this case, everybody put their heads together and came up with kind of a crucial clue on it and ultimately got to the bad guy within about six hours of the second one. So, that was, that was actually really well done. The other thing is the investigation ongoing of the robbery and also narcotics investigations that are sort of dovetailing. The detectives were successful in obtaining a search warrant, and we also served that warrant early in the morning on, I don't remember the exact date, but we did find several items of drug evidence in a house on Johanniver, and that investigation actually is still ongoing in addition to the robbery investigation. So, everybody's doing some really good work and working together as a team. Any questions about the monthly report?
Do we ever issue a report that kind of gives us an indication of, I don't know what the right terminology is, how often we issue warrants or tickets, you know, because you have a lot of activity here, but what generates revenue is those tickets are the one. And do we track that from a historical perspective to see if a lot of this stuff is revenue generating or if it's...
I have not in the past included a report on how many tickets we write. I can certainly put that in there, though.
We do get a executive session, I guess executive session. We get a court report that, monthly, I believe, that tells us what kind of revenue is collected.
Number of citations, number of guilty pleas. It's required by the Office of the State Court Administrator that spells that out. That's generated by the court. That's a report from the previous month. That is on the first meeting in the month that that...
Why, is that executive session material?
It's not executive session.
I'm sorry, it's...
It's public material. It's in your packet. It's subject to any request at any time.
Okay, I'm just curious.
It's a public report, and in fact, I think you can actually go to the OSCA website and download it, and also, it's a document that they put in and generate as far as a statewide report at different periods of the year, quarterly reports.
Okay.
As you know, I had my second ride along with our police department, and I highly encourage you guys to do that. I'm always learning stuff that my regular life does not entail, so it's pretty interesting. One of the things that I would like to start seeing in the reports has to do with the drug activity and the arrest. I would like to make that a focus of what the board sees at our meetings because I think that is such a large issue to our community, that the more we can bring that out to the public and make the public aware. I was very shocked at some of the things I've learned on my two ride-alongs so far, that I'm sure there's not one person in the police department or in law enforcement that is surprised by that, but I think there's probably a lot of other people like myself that would be shocked if they knew some of the things that I saw or heard or whatever. So, if we could start getting a little more detailed information on that, I know that's a lot more work for you, but I would like to start seeing that in the public. And the other thing, which is really a hot button for me, and maybe it's because I really like this community and I grew up in one of those neighborhoods that looks like crap right now, you know, I'm looking at the ordinance violation, and I really think we need to get really involved with this. I mean, I see this, so maybe this is all I need, but I drive through town every day and see the same junk sitting out in the yards and stuff, and I'm just wondering if there's a way that whether, you know, those individuals that do that have a report to tell us how things are going other than left a note, corrected action. I'd like to know exactly what's going on to try to clean up our town.
Yeah, generally, the way that code enforcement officers work is, we like to have them try to make personal contact whenever they can. Obviously, they work during the day, so sometimes it's difficult to make that happen, but we found that making that personal contact and asking them to clean up whatever the issue is, whether it be a high grass or a solid waste violation or whatever it is, gets a lot better response than leaving them a note that says, "You got ten days to get this taken care of." That's just, what hasn't been successful in the past.
To help facilitate that personal contact, would it be possible to, either on certain days, to shift some of their hours so occasionally they may work until six o'clock in the evening one day a week or something, catch people in their home?
Right. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. And then, a lot of these homes are not owned by the residents, so what do we do to the landlords that don't seem to care a whole lot that the property looks as poorly as it does?
Well, generally, we do have some success with that, and I want to make sure that I'm clear. Are we talking about building maintenance issues or are we talking about
All right, now, I'm talking about junk in the yards. You know, how many, you know, metal structures, air conditioning use, do you need to sit in your lawn?
Sure.
You know, how many refrigerators need to sit in your yard?
Yeah, generally speaking, we get pretty good response from folks when we reach out to them, and that includes landlords. So, if there are some specific issues, please make a list of them and bring them to my attention, and we'll make sure they address.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anything else about the report?
Torch run.
Okay. Law enforcement torch run. It's kind of my baby. This is our fourth year. The torch run is designed to draw attention to the very Special Olympics, which is a huge event. It touches a lot of people, a lot of individuals here in Warren County, which I was surprised when we did our first year, how many athletes showed up to be there and run with the officers on the final leg. The date has been set, May twenty-ninth this year. We will start again in Forestelle. I'm not sure exactly what the start location's gonna be yet. We had some things changed this year due to the fact that it's later in the year. In the past, we've kind of designed our run around going to, visiting the schools, running through the schools, and all the kids who come out and share the runners on. This year, the schools will already be shut down for the summer. So, we're moving on to something else, and we're going to visit the business zones in the various towns that we run through. We've already reached out to a couple of businesses who are actually pretty excited about having the run come through their business, so much so that they've agreed to take donations for Special Olympics and pass those on to us so we can pass them through the Special Olympics as a result of this. So, getting the word out, making money to help the Special Olympians is really the whole idea, and I think we're gonna be even more successful this year with that.
Is this on our website?
I don't think it's up there yet. This was the first time that I had gone public with the date, so we will get it up there probably tomorrow.
Are we selling a lot of t-shirts yet?
We have been selling a lot of t-shirts. Thank you for bringing that up. T-shirts are available in the police department. Anybody that's interested can certainly come by. They're ten dollars a piece, and the only ones that they have this year are the short sleeve version. They didn't do the long sleeves this year.
Just one second.
I've served for probably twenty-six years on the Warren County Handicap Services Board, and I, you know, I just commend you for the work on that because what this means to the life of these individuals to participate, we can't measure and you can't appreciate until you're exposed to them and exposed to the activities. And thank you for doing that for the community.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and again, I, every year when I do it, I get pretty emotional and the whole thing, but it's really worth it.
Anything else, Chief?
That's all I have. Thank you.
What was the date on that, Chief?
May twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
And it starts in Forestelle?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It starts in Forestelle and will end up here sometime over the lunch hour, and Jack is actually helping me out with putting the reception together out on the front lawn, so we'll have hot dogs and refreshments and...
Great.
Hopefully, a keynote speaker.
Yeah, that would be a great, great place for the board to be at that point.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Gavers, you're up.
Could I, a quick moment before you move on to Guy? I just want to make sure it's have approval. I was also wanting to try to put together a little fundraiser prior to the torch run to raise money for Special Olympics and use the pavilion.
Oh, okay.
On maybe a Saturday morning, and all donations would go to Special Olympics, but to make sure I had permission to use the pavilion.
That's not at the farmer's market, is it?
I think it's prior to the farmer's market starting.
Okay. Now, Mr. Gavers.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item I have is the engineer for the wastewater treatment facility.
Guy, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to review this, so I'm gonna need a little bit more time.
We're moving on.
I'd make a motion to, I guess I should allow the, maybe two of the new members to have questions.
I think so. If they got any questions or...
Could you just, in a minute or two, explain what the extent of the expansion is, what's involved?
Gonzalo Engineering came in as the one recommended.
No, I understand that, but, you know, the proposal is the expansion project for the wastewater. I'm just curious as to what's the expansion? What does that mean?
One process that we need to look at is our sludge hauling.
Okay.
Liquid sludge, our bar screen.
So, it's similar to what we talked about last Wednesday?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, it would be Gonzalo's company and then Horner and Schiffer as the second choice? Proceed to go with the negotiation with them.
Any other questions?
I'd make a motion to accept the recommendation for the contract with the engineer, Gonzalez.
Second?
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Flake to accept the Public Works Director recommendation that Gonzalez Companies be approved as the first choice in our engineer for a wastewater treatment plant expansion. All those, our roll call, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry, does that need to also include, they're asking for the Horner and Schiffer run be approved as a second choice. Do you want a motion to approve both of those?
What I think we're asking for is Gonzalez Companies as a first choice, Horner and Schiffern as a second choice, so that we can negotiate cost.
Which one?
If we can negotiate cost with the first choice, we'd like to do that. If not, then we could proceed to Horner and Schiffern to negotiate cost and then bring that back to the board for a final approval.
Is that typically what we do with projects?
It's, yes, what we have been doing on big projects.
The statute for engineers and architects requires you to make a decision based on RFQs. Once you choose based on RFQs, you say a first and second. If you can't come to contract terms with the first one, you have to come to contract terms with the second one. I would imagine the architect and engineer lobby got that statute passed to require that.
Okay, I would make it, I would withdraw my motion.
The second's withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I make a motion that we accept Gonzalez as the first and...
Who is the second?
Horner and Schiffern.
Horner and Schiffern is the second.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the Gonzalez Engineering Firm as our first choice, and Horner and Schiffern as their second choice. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
Next item I have is the approval of the hydrant meter policy.
Could you give me a little background on this?
The, you might have a contractor come in and start many grinding the streets and go get a meter from us with a backflow device, and we take their readings off the meter, and then they'll use it and bring it back in fifteen days, and we take the meters off of it, readings off of it, and bill them.
I understand perfectly, my only concern when I looked at this was hydrant meters will be utilized for large projects and construction only. What's a large project?
So, it would be the highway grinding, the mud bog, last year rented the big hydrant meter, the hydrant meter. We have a smaller hydrant meter, too. It wouldn't be on a hydrant. It would go down to a two-inch line. So, but the big one is for more, if a contractor takes the meter and all of a sudden they lose it, then we... meter and all of a sudden they lose it, then we at least get our deposit back and be able to replace that meter.
Again, I understand the, why we're doing it and everything, but I just, anytime that you have a definition or a term in there, large projects, without any kind of definition of what a large project is, leaves open to interpretation from the users, but I don't-
Is a large project defined by the use of a three-inch?
Three, the size of the water, yeah, the water, the three-inch meter, that would be, you wouldn't need, that would consider a large project because of the size of the meter.
So if it was a two-inch, you wouldn't consider a large project? So it's kind of defining itself? Does that make sense?
So there isn't a hydrant meter, a hydrant meter is a three-inch line. There isn't a two-inch-
There's a three-inch meter, then there's a two-inch meter. I mean, I can change it if you want me to change it.
I don't know, again, I don't know what it changes to, because I'm not, I'm not versed in that. It just seems like that doesn't necessarily clarify what-
Well, you may reword it to say hydrant meters will be utilized for large projects in construction only, requiring a three-inch meter. That gives you your large project.
Why wouldn't you just simply say that the hydrant meters shall be used for all projects, whether used in a three-inch size or two-inch size, depends on the project, and just get rid of the whole large? Because you're using the same meter on each one, right?
No, they're different meters, different sized meters. I think we're making it more complicated in the sense the meters, only two size meters. We're saying the large size meters-
The issue is whether we're calling it a large project or a small project.
It's small. It's not that difficult.
Project, pretty simple.
The determination of what you call a large project and a small project would be, I guess, what the project is.
I think we all know what the incentive is.
Well, John, do you have a suggestive wording if you're not happy with that?
No.
I mean, you can't criticize if you have a suggestion.
Oh, I can. I just, I just-
John, what's wrong with me adding the three-inch meter up here by large products in construction only that require a three-inch meter? Why would that not be sufficient?
Because sometimes you need a two-inch.
Not on a large project. That's what you say.
There's also a two-inch meter.
Is that for a large project?
Small.
A two- or three-inch meter is a large project. A one-inch meter, a one-inch line would not, I mean, would be a regular residential type.
I don't know.
Did you already policy a two-inch, a policy of a one-inch?
Actually, this is all already in place. The only thing that's different on this than what exists is the addition of a deposit based on the meter size. That's what's different than what's out there right now.
So you could really present this without the script and just say, when request for hydrant meters is to be used by the public, the city's required a deposit that needs to be refunded. That's really what you're trying to accomplish?
Right.
You're not trying to identify size of projects.
The addition of a deposit, so that we don't lose meters that the city has to require, is really the change.
So if we struck the first paragraph, would that do what you're trying to do?
I think it would, wouldn't it, Guy?
The key word is "large project."
So you could, I think you could take that whole first paragraph out and just leave the discussion about the deposit and-
Because the deposit applies to large projects, with three-inch large project, with two-inch large project, or small project, so we're just trying to put something in ordinance or in policy that allows us to collect money.
Exactly.
What about the first paragraph?
So we don't require a deposit now for anything?
I believe it's $100 for a three-inch meter.
For, what, for like the two-inch or the one-inch?
The-
Is it all the same deposit, or is it?
It's not enough to cover the replacement cost.
You were talking about possibly striking the whole first paragraph. My only question is, does the part of the backflow device, is that-
That has to be on there.
So we can't strike the whole thing?
But if we're supplying the meter-
But not always, though.
Oh, we're not always.
No, some contracts bring their own meters in.
Man, I shoved the, I put the shuttle handle in the bicycles, folks.
But isn't the backflow device requirement in a separate policy related to backflow devices?
On the policy on, in our procedures, they have to have a backflow device.
It's covered elsewhere.
Yeah.
I don't care at this point.
If you don't care, the motion's approved, though.
So, second.
Motion made by Alderman Flank, seconded by, who was it? Just Clark. Alderman Clark to approve the policy on hydrant meter usage.
Could you have John vote first?
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor, who made the first motion?
I did.
Alderman Flank. Alderman Clark was second.
All right. I'm good now. Sorry. Roll call vote?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
He didn't have a suggestion.
I didn't have a suggestion. Not my job to lie there.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one.
I'm really glad we weren't talking about that bar drain.
I'll be right with you.
Trailer bid, hydro tilt bid trailer. We only received one bid for that. We advertised it on the website, on the bulletin board, and then we contacted nine other people to bid on it. And that's all that we received on it. Pat Kelly.
And I'm assuming this is a good price, if you go out in the market and just try to buy one?
Well, we bid it out for a heavy-duty trailer, yes.
Yeah, so in other words, if I went to buy the same type of trailer out of the marketplace, I'd be paying more than this, so this is a good price?
I would say yes. Originally, we budgeted $8,000, and when we went out for that, we price shopped prior to that, so we were close to the budget prices.
I'd make a motion to accept the recommendation for the purchase of the trailer.
I'm sorry, I've got one question. I don't need to see it necessarily, but you say you contacted nine others. Will that be retained as part of this bid?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's all part of the bid.
I'll make the second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the Public Works Director's bid from Pat Kelly, hydro tilt bid trailer in the amount of $7,600. Roll call.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is a roller bid for new paper rollers, and Pat Kelly came in on a little bid on that, too.
Is there a, what are your thoughts on new versus used?
We have a used one now. My issue is if we got 10 tons of asphalt, send it in a back-way truck, and then roll it on, start it. We have a problem with rollers that are going to be developed, although it may-
Heck, I've got new cars that sometimes don't start, but you don't believe that it's of value to look into a newer refurbish?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of the Public Works Director to accept a bid from Pat Kelly for a paper roller for $13,761.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the Public Works Director's recommendation on a paper roller from Pat Kelly Company in amount of $13,761. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is a roller bid for new paper rollers, and Pat Kelly came in on a little bid on that, too.
Is there a, what are your thoughts on new versus used?
We have a used one now. My issue is if we got 10 tons of asphalt, send it in a back-way truck, and then roll it on, start it. We have a problem with rollers that are going to be developed, although it may-
Heck, I've got new cars that sometimes don't start, but you don't believe that it's of value to look into a newer refurbish?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of the Public Works Director to accept a bid from Pat Kelly for a paper roller for $13,761.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the Public Works Director's recommendation on a paper roller from Pat Kelly Company in amount of $13,761. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. I'm down to item 23, bills and ordinances. First, our bill reading number 1313.
Call for the first reading of bill number 1313.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer for first reading of bill number 1313.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of Lawrence, Missouri for the Safe Routes to School Program Agreement for the Installation of Sidewalks Along the West Side of Route 47 from Boyer Avenue South to Dry Fork Crossing.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 13-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second and final reading and passage of bill number 1313.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the City of Lawrence, Missouri for the Safe Routes to School Program Agreement for the Installation of Sidewalks Along the West Side of Route 47 from Boyer Avenue South to Dry Fork Crossing.
Roll call, please.
Do we have an opportunity to ask questions?
Yeah, you may. You've got to be quick, though, because I-
I know.
I go ahead.
I guess my question is, is this part of a grant?
This is for the Safe Routes to School Grant that-
Okay, does the city have a process for approving what's on the east side? Because that's kind of hit and miss on the east side. Or am I screwed up in terms of, if you go out of Boyer and you go north?
Right. We did not apply for that. We worked on that on our own, trying to get some through there, and were able to receive right-of-way from individual owners.
So we're still stuck at that issue?
So we're still working on that side.
Okay. What about, I've had 10 people call me up, and why, concerned about sidewalk issues going north on 47. And I understand that highway's going to widen at some point in our lifetime, maybe, being real dangerous. Have we ever tried to consider a grant for the north side?
The roadway right there, when they're looking at widening it to, there is no shoulders, there's no room right there, so there would need to be a lot of right-of-ways and easements acquired, and a lot of pooled up in a lot of places there. So this is something we've looked at, but just not feasible at this time.
But that's getting to be very dangerous as population is going north, and you see women with strollers and kids walking down 47, and, you know, somehow we need to figure out how to address that issue going north. Okay.
Take your life in your own hands walking on 47.
Definitely agree. It's a private property.
Well, it's the same thing you have on the south side. You have private property, but I think it's something we need to work toward, getting some resolution in some way, shape, or form of that, because it's-
I agree. That's a dangerous situation to do there, but it's a very difficult area to deal with.
To deal with. You're right.
I don't believe it.
You're going to be taking some private leg in there and all kinds of issues. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. I see nothing else on my agenda with the exception of moving to executive session for personnel and legal counsel. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flank to move to executive session and discuss personnel and legal counsel. All in favor, say aye.